We're a little behind.
Well, we have a good group here tonight. Is Al here? No, Al is not here.
Three, two, one.
You're live, sir.
We're live. All right. Well, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the North Port of Trustees to Warner here on November 20th, 2018. And if you would stand with me, please, for the pledge. Well, we do tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. First order of business this evening would be comments and questions through the village board. If any of you would like to address the board this evening, welcome to come up. If not, then I will close that portion of the meeting.
I got it. Can the board do it?
Yes, the board certainly can close the public's board.
All right, all right, yep. Got one for Jake, since Will isn't here. Boat and Lincolnshire. Parked right out next to the street, was there for six weeks and then it disappeared for a week, now it's back. What are they? Are you aware of that there at the evening? I don't know what that, it looks to me like it's there for the duration.
Okay, I can, we can check and see if they sent any notices.
Yeah, they were brought to my own attention by a resident.
Yeah, see if they're sending a notice, if not, we can look at it and see if they'll send out if it's appropriate.
Yep. No, that's, I can't get. I also had a business owner let me know that there is parking going on on the sidewalk as well as in an area that is not marked off for parking on South Avenue. And I requested that, or advised him to call the Western Police, 911, and/or Chief Rigger, and make his complaint known because that has to do with New York State Motor Vehicle Law. And so I will help him with that. And if anybody else out there is having problems in terms of those kinds of things, they're welcome to let us know. All right, then moving on to our village board business. Our first item is the approval of our minutes from October 30th, which was our workshop, which would be combined, or was a presentation primarily by the representatives from B&amp;L regarding the regional program. If anybody has any questions, comments?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to let the board know I was disappointed in you guys were setting me up for that meeting. It was discussed that we would wear our costumes, and I sat there silly by myself, so.
I wore mine, man.
Yeah, you took it off as soon as you saw the people. You got nervous and you left me.
He had his headphones on.
I kept that hair on the entire meeting and it was hot.
I was very proud of you.
Maybe we could put some posts on our Facebook page of Mr. Alito on the 7th.
Good idea.
I was swaddling the other night.
The whole family was pretty good.
I thought you were gonna wear something special on your head tonight.
Relax. Don't give away this, geez, Heather, you're jumping up and down.
All right, well, I don't know, we're gonna make a note of that in the minutes. However, if there are no additions other than, that'll, I would have a motion to approve the minutes set.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers. Oh, sorry. Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
I am here.
I apologize.
Did everybody see my picture? I put it on my statement case that wasn't there. Yeah, and I made a contact. They will not miss another meeting.
Mayor and I discussed, I'm getting a roller. We're on a blast bus.
By your being here, you saved us some of the budget costs of getting something like that. Fly swatter.
I'm a three yard stick, I'll let you know.
Next is the approval of the November 8th village board meeting minutes. Ask for a resolution to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy. Okay. Mayor Byers.
I approve.
Motion passes.
Okay, we next have budget modifications and transfers. We have two of them this evening. The first one is as a result of what we approved last time. Depending upon the response back from the insurance company, board provided mayor with the ability to sign for the new auditing or the new accounting programs. And I did make that approval. I let everybody know that the insurance would go up as well as our need for cyber insurance because the fact we would now be handling very sensitive information. And the office staff decided that it was not in their best interest either to take on the liability, so actually not taking that component dropped us from $52,000 now to more than $6,000 in no increase in the liability.
Really? I like it, too.
So what we have for the general fund modification is this from line 01055112-205 vehicle, $24,477 transferred to 01011325200 line clerk treasurer equipment to allow for a 50% payment on act fund and new accounting program. Secondly, we, well, let's do that first because the second is out of the short form.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The second is a transfer for sewer fund budget modification, and that is from line 04088130-423, select calling landfill line, $1,000, transferred to line 04088130-455 for engineering and professional services as a result of additional invoices from La Bella for engineering work related to the STP. Those expenses were not budgeted for in the meeting. Motion for approval of the transfer.
I make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we are moving to the, I have three resolutions to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look them over, and I have just a couple of questions. One was a, just a note that our Veterans Day costs were under our budget, which is good, probably because of its day it occurred, but we did fund the Veterans Dinner at Cottrell Warner, and we did appreciate that greatly. Secondly, I have a question, Jake, for you. There was a bill for pump station upgrade, $29,294. Is that something that was initially in our planning for this year's budget put in there for an upgrade, or is this something that came up?
Yes, that was part of the, the controls for the pump station and the rails for the pump, our super name pump station at the STP. I believe that was in, that was one of the regularly, one of the budgeted for items. I will confirm that because I don't remember.
I mean, I looked at the lines and there's a lot that was done in there. I just had a question as to whether we had planned on doing that or not.
Yes.
Anytime something like that's gonna come up this year with the sewer.
What happened with the leaf box, the emergency repair, on page three?
The.
Did something run over or something?
No, it, leaf box was older than dirt, and it was just, it was falling apart, and it even had a harder summer than we expected, and wouldn't close, and, you know, it just sits there now when you're ready to use it.
What's it made of?
It's steel, and it's got a mesh, steel mesh on the top, yes. We did some fabricating on it to, so we can get it closed when the guys back up to the pile, it locks into the tailgate, so you can release it and dump it in there. And we were planning on using a different one, that's just a cap, but that truck was giving us a hard time when we were getting ready to start, so we said, let's get this old one back out, use that, and go from there. But now it's working, it's working quite well.
Anything else?
What are the cylinder deposits?
Cylinder deposits, 400.
Return slack chemical?
Slack, that's for either chlorine or ferrochloride. They bring a, it's a big bin that they bring out, it's like a 330 gallon tote.
Okay.
Well, not the ferrochloride, the chlorine would be a big tote.
Yeah, one was like 1,600 and another was 24, and I was trying to just figure out.
Those are, those are credits.
Yeah, I see that.
Yep, they're, those are credits back on the containers, basically container deposit that you get.
Okay, okay.
When they, when they do them, they'll, they'll pick up some old ones and bring us new ones and.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Well, actually, that's a great question.
There was a checking balance, there was 1,600 return, and then there's a deposit of 1,600.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, there's a return, but there's a deposit further down as well, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure it out.
For another question, and I would, the motion to pay the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I have a question, Heather, regarding our energy. I took a look at that, and I'm just wondering how we are doing with our new service with Monroe County, who I saw in Monroe County charge, and I wondered how we're doing in comparison to where we were.
Chris said it's actually, she hasn't noticed a huge significant difference yet, just the beginning, but she said she actually is seeing a small one. So nothing significant yet, but when you look at the year, we should definitely see a savings. And it's been going really well with the, the new system, going, it's really a lot more seamless paying the bill that way. And we actually recently got a credit from our GME because we had overpaid, it was just kind of a little bit of a lax, but, so we just got a big credit for that. And it's going well, so I will keep, I'll keep you updated on that.
Okay, next item we have are the financial statements for October. And we're running July, August, September, October, four months, and the concern that I have is that we are, we're over in a number of areas that are pretty significant.
Same here.
And I'm wondering what that, or what the reason is. One of them is the pipe tools and wood line.
I saw that.
0180881408, we are, we budgeted $500 and some dollars and we've spent $7,000 at present rate. So I'm questioning, what are we doing?
I think that was that repair, $7,000 repair to the AI in the parking lot where we have our line.
Oh, oh.
Line, you know, they've.
Right out of the dam?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, they pulled that line through in there, and that's the only line that we have available for. You know, it's a sewer, and sanitary sewer lines don't have a lot of.
Pipe holes and water.
And there's not a lot of, but 400 lines, if you will, there, so. Yep. Yeah, that was a, yeah, must be that month of day, that was a 7214, so.
I think in terms of general, we're doing pretty, pretty well in terms of sewer, again, we're looking at about 51% of our budget view, so something that we need to keep an eye on, I think. I do want to report that we have an increase in our general sales revenue from the county. I believe it was close to $18,000, something like that, for the third quarter. We have an increase for second quarter as well, so that's positive. And I don't know whether we're going to see an increase in that revenue in the future or not based on the new rulings in terms of collecting online sales tax for those sales that are online. So that may be something that is coming, I wouldn't say that's positive. Okay, then we'll keep an eye on that.
Wait, watchers signed up for starting this Saturday, right?
I believe they started, didn't they?
No.
Or did Joe just walk them through this past?
We just showed them. But, yep, it's around two hours, I think, and they, we came to an agreement, Don was happy with, with the agreement that we had, and, yeah, it should be good.
Wonderful.
He did recommend that we shouldn't go out further than a year, just in case, so we're gonna, we'll reassess it at that point.
I'm a little concerned about.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about not being able to run into anybody else.
Yeah, we have a, that's Saturday. It was in college from 1 to 5.
Just in the morning, it was at 8:00. Was it 8:00?
I have no idea. If you ever notice, I say "we," we from Wait Watchers. So I have no idea.
That's what I can't do.
I'll eat your deer.
It's really important, so we had to, we couldn't.
Okay, we move next to agenda item five, a resolution authorizing, for authorization to permanently appoint Dan Bordle in the wastewater treatment plant operator trainee title at a step eight at 2322 per hour.
He's the best one, other than Jake, of course.
It's not what you said there.
I did, I did have a concern, and that has been addressed in terms of the number of operators, so in terms of the future, I believe until we actually have that opening in, we remain, here we remain in the title, correct?
Yes.
And once that opens up, we're, we don't know where we're going in the future, but once that does open up, we would be able to move right in.
Yes, you would have, you'd have a, there's still an ABC exam there against American Board of Certifiers, but there's not another civil service exam, and that's to become a licensed operator.
Yep, he has a lot of initiative. So, I would ask for a motion authorizing the permanent appointment of Dan Bordle in the wastewater treatment plant operator trainee title at step.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito. Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have on our agenda, we have the attorney, and anything from the attorney. I might presume that since Don is not here, we do not have anything at this meeting that is going to be brought up. He did, however, send a copy of the fully signed and implemented or documented court and vote line of credit for the Freddie Woods development, and so they should be able to begin now, as soon as they're ready to go. So looking forward to that.
Should we sign?
I had signed it, I was the first one to sign. So I'm on, there were two pages for signature.
Okay.
One of them did not have the bank.
Okay.
That's signed on a separate page, otherwise they would have a three-year.
I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, we are missing the clerk's office. I know you had something you wanted to bring up, or you want me to bring it up. I can bring it up.
You can.
Okay, we had a request from the SOTUS Bay Junior Sailing Group. They were looking to use the community center, and they asked if we could allow them to use it without cost. And unfortunately, we cannot, even though they are 501(c), we cannot do that because in the eyes of New York State, it would be gifting by a municipality, and we're not able to do that. So just for the record, I want to make it known that that is the reason why we cannot do that. Any other organization would face the same, same answer. All right?
Thank you.
All right, DPW?
Just a couple things. The question I, everybody's mind seems to be, or on my phone a lot, is leaves. Our intention is to continue to leave, pick up the moment the weather allows. We did try to get out yesterday a little bit, but the, you know, the residual snow is just coming up the equipment, they get stuck on in the discharge tube, so we decided to wait a little bit longer until we can make better headway on it, but it's our intention, we always get a thought or an opportunity, so it's our intention to, as soon as the weather allows, get back out and clean them up.
Next week, you got some 40 days.
Yeah, I think so, and some rain to help melt the snow. We do try to remind everyone and ask everyone to remember to keep the leaves out of the road. One great example of why, you know, we always discuss blocking the gutters or blocking the storm inlets. Another great example of why we do that is the leaves will, we don't plow, we don't plow lawns, we plow the roads and the gutters, and when there's leaves piled up in them, they end up back in the driveways and plugging up snow, or snow lowers and things like that, so it's not happening to you, it's gonna happen to your neighbors, so keep them, keep them in the lawns, and we'll get to them. But we will, we will get back out as soon as we can. Obviously, there's, you know, the snow to deal with now, there's a few things for the White Christmas is coming up on the first, some decorations we started doing, trying to do those while we, while we can't pick up leaves or plow right now, so we're getting ahead of that a little bit, so hopefully next week we'll have the opportunity to get the leaves, but I don't think the weatherman knows what's gonna happen next week yet, so.
The lights looked, I think there's someone out, and that was it.
Yeah, I saw a couple. There's a couple, one in front of Barry's and on the corner, that, one of them was half lit, one of them was not lit.
Yeah.
I was in a car yesterday, and they started putting them up this way, and I'm like, I forgot it, I gotta call chief.
I heard about that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I drove, I drove down after the.
So you caught it.
After the fire, after the drill, the fire department, I was like, yeah, somebody didn't recall this properly, so, yeah, they screened them back out today.
Perfect, well, good.
And sewer, if you want to roll it in the sewer, we had a plan, after our workshop, we discussed setting up a meeting with the engineers and myself to address some of the issues or the questions that we had and look for some clarification. That was to happen today, it got postponed, and I believe that's the ripple effect of that is also gonna be ultimately a postponement of the joint meeting that was scheduled for the 29th.
Well, I'll interject on that one. An email conversation I had with the supervisor, it is still on, from his point of view, it remains on until beginning of next week, where a decision will be made whether or not we have an opportunity to discuss that, that the information that's gonna be presented or, or not. So I, right now, I'll interject in terms of our next meeting. It was scheduled as a joint workshop between the village and the town at Town Hall or at the town meeting room, and at 7 o'clock next Thursday, the 29th, but I would ask that you check the website next week. We will post that immediately upon understanding or knowledge of whether or not it will take place. A number of questions were brought up at the meeting that we had between engineers, the town, the village, and the DEC. The DEC had questions that were being taken back to be answered and provide information regarding that, and also there was more information requested for detailed, a detailed analysis, I would put it that way, of what the costs are going to be. So that's still in the, in the works. So whether that will, whether or not we are able to have that information and both the town and village able to look through and vet that information for the 29th, we'll see. So right now, the meeting is on, but by Monday, we do not meet, so check the website, please. Sorry.
Nope. I need the accurate information, that's all I have.
Going along with what's happening in the future, our next regular scheduled board meeting will be December 13th. Do that now?
Quite sure.
It is fitting that we are, you know, in the process of Happy Thanksgiving. I gotta make up to Jerry, I had him all set up in terms of coming here after Halloween dressed, and he's not gonna let me forget it.
Do it, do it again.
We're good for this, do this again? So in light of this, I say Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and I do pray that it is a safe one for everyone, and we're not out shoveling, but eat responsibly, eat responsibly and drink responsibly and be aware of travel. White Christmas in the Village is coming up.
Yes.
And we have December 1st on Saturday, begins at 3 o'clock, horse drawn rides, we have the bounce house going on in front of the village office, there's a chili cookoff, various businesses are working with that, so tour around, and Santa Claus will be visiting at about 3:30. The village office, cookie decorations going on, storytelling taking place next door, yesterday's muse, and the chime bell choir will be presenting on for Easter night. Strolling carolers will be going around through the village, and the parade of lights will begin at 6:30. So I hope that we will see as many as possible coming out, hopefully the weather will be conducive to that.
Fireworks, 8:15.
Fireworks, 8:15.
That's Fireman's Field.
Fireman's Field, wow, okay, will that then? We'll probably, but okay, it's earlier than 12 o'clock midnight, so we probably won't have as many people calling. All right, so one more announcement that I would like to make, I received this in the mail today, so as a public service announcement for our residents, the Monroe County Community Development Division through the Department of Planning and Development administers a home improvement program. Excuse me. It's called HIP, and it utilizes funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's called HIP and it utilizes funds from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. And these funds, um, are able to assist income eligible homeowners to repair and revitalize their homes. Uh, the projects allow property owners to maintain the value of their property and stabilize our community. Improvements have included A D A modifications, allowing homeowners to remain in their home, structural repairs, uh, for example, such as a, a re-roofing. Um, Monroe County also has added mixed solar, which is an application for, uh, utilizing , uh, solar, uh, energy. Effective August first, excuse me again, uh, there was an increase in the asset limit from forty thousand to fifty thousand, so more families may qualify for the program. So if there's anybody out there who has an interest, uh, you fall into that eligibility in terms of, um, asset limit, uh, and would like to have more information, we have brochures and information that is available in town, our village hall, come on in and we will provide some... I know that a couple of, I know a couple of homes that have paid in debt in the village and hope group repairs. All right, um, anybody else have, uh, anything that they would like to bring up?
How are we doing on that thing, uh, with the cell phone pods?
How are we doing?
Yeah, it's, uh...
Uh, we are moving along on that. Uh, I have asked and questioned that, um, Don White, um, Jake, myself, Will, uh, we take a look at various areas in the village and anybody else other than three members, but two members of the board can be there, um, and we look at what our restrictions will be. Uh, do we have areas that we are restricting the use or limiting the use of those or the putting up with those? Uh, we have the ability to do that and, um, quite certain, um, limitations, I believe, on, uh, where they go, uh, as well as, um, maybe what they look like as well. So that's, uh, where we are. I asked to have this done in December so that we can put something together. We will have to go to a, a, a public hearing, but we can then present something that is firm fixed, uh, for the public to comment on as we move forward to try to make this a law, um, and in our code book by February.
Does it do with the placement of the poles and all that?
Uh, that, there, there is information in there. Have you read the document that...
I, yeah, I've read all of it.
Right. Uh, placement of poles in, in the right of way is questioned.
Yeah.
Whether or not that could be done. But there's also, I just went, uh, to the local government, um, conference down in Batavia, they talked about it and there are guidelines and recommendations from the federal in terms of costs and so on that will pass on.
It won't be too long, I would guess. Five years, then every home has a, their own little cellular pod.
Well, you know, there's...
It won't be too long.
I don't think they can mandate it.
It'll be left in the gas meter.
We cannot mandate it that everybody have one, uh, for example.
Yeah, it'll be available.
It will be available.
Everybody has their own cell.
That they're making available now. And in terms of, one of the questions that came up in terms of health, the federal government has said that it cannot be prohibited on the basis of anyone's concern regarding health of that.
That's right.
That's a federal statement, so... Um, so there has to be other avenues that we look at in terms of how we, how we limit and how we control and how we, we moderate that. Okay. Then if there is no other business, I will...
Seven thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven. Take a motion to, um, adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'll...
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. Have a Happy Thanksgiving and a safe one.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Now, it's... Thanksgiving cookies right here, whoever wants one, come and get one. Everyone's made.
Did Joe do you make those?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm coming. I'm up there.
They're very good. Come on, they're good. Beautiful.